Quick trip redevelopment in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Some.
Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Any discussion? Alderman Kohler.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting when we had the first reading, I voiced some concern over this plan, and I asked to meet with our city manager to review the plans. I just wanted to say that I did that. I reviewed the plans. Alderman O'Brien also reviewed the plans. After reviewing the plans, we found the plans to be in order. Actually, it's a very good plan, so I thought it was a good plan. And I think that Quick Trips and the development group there did a good job of putting the plan together. The only thing I asked our city manager is to review a couple of things, which he knows about. One is traffic management has nothing to do with the plan, but it has to do with workman high dot on that intersection, as well as public safety for, again, Quick Trips' plan has everything for public safety purposes, but our access to that from the development behind could use some review for sidewalks and stuff like that. Other than that, because I did review it very carefully, it is part of Ward Seven. I would recommend to my fellow council members to approve this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kohler. Did anyone else have anything? Okay, so the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the motion passed. Sorry, I just lost myself. The ordinance is adopted. That brings us to ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-two. Approve an amended special use permit for outdoor storage and variations for four thousand one Industrial Avenue, Richards Building Supplies, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Alderman Reyes for the first and Alderman Bud Matts for the second. Any discussion? Alderman Bud Matts.
So, in reviewing this plan, I also went past the property, and I think that the changes that they've decided to make and are asking for the variations are reasonable and actually will improve the property and make it more in conformity with their neighboring properties. So I think it's a great thing, and I'll be supporting it. I appreciate the efforts that they're making to make my ward more uniform and to fully utilize their property, which will allow them to stay here.
Thank you. Does there anybody else? The question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes. With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This brings us to our consent ordinances. The next items on the agenda are the consent ordinances in for first reading. It consists of eight items, items C through J. Does any alderman wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Alderman Bud Matts.
Item D.
Okay. Was there anybody else? Okay. Sorry, hold on. I'm not as fast as the mayor. Okay. So, to... The chair declares that in order for one motion to consider the seven ordinances, A through C and E through J, there needs to be one motion with... One motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Alderman O'Brien for the first.
Second.
Alderman McHale for the second. Okay, so, I'm sorry, that was ordinances C.
C.
Yes, sorry.
E through J.
J. Do you want me to redo it?
No, I got it.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, guys. Okay, so ordinance C, number twenty-five dash zero-zero, amend the city code in order to reduce the number of video gaming cafes CG licenses issued in the city of Rowling Meadows, and reduce the number of Class 2A liquor licenses issued in the city of Rowling Meadows. Isabella's Cafe, fifty-five forty North, new Wilkie Road, in for first reading. Ordinance E, twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve a lease agreement with the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System, NIPUS, for the former fire station located at twenty-four fifty-five Plum Grove Road, in for first reading. Ordinance F, uh, number F, item F. Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve annexing certain properties to the city of Rowling Meadows and automatically zoning said properties in accordance with law seventeen thirty-six, South Meacham Road, pin number zero-two dash three-four dash two-zero-two dash zero-one-six, in for first reading. Item G, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve annexing certain properties to the city of Rowling Meadows and automatically zoning said property in accordance with law, ten thirty-six and ten forty-eight Plum Grove Road, pin numbers zero-two dash two-seven dash two-oh-three dash zero-zero-nine and two... Zero-two dash two-seven dash two-zero-three dash zero-one-zero, in for first reading. Item H, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve annexing certain properties to the city of Rowling Meadows and automatically zoning said properties in accordance with law, ten thirty-six and ten forty-eight Plum Grove Road, pin numbers zero-two dash two-seven dash two-oh-three dash zero-zero-nine and two... Zero-two dash two-seven dash two-zero-three dash zero-one-zero, in for first reading. Item G, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve annexing certain properties to the city of Rowling Meadows and automatically zoning said properties in accordance with law, thirteen twenty and thirteen eighty-four Vermont slash three-eight-eight Emerson, pin numbers zero-two dash twenty-seven dash four-oh-four dash zero-zero-two and zero-two dash twenty-seven dash zero-four-four dash zero-zero-three and two-zero dash twenty-seven dash two-zero-two dash zero-zero-four, in for first reading. Item I, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve annexing certain properties to the city of Rowling Meadows and automatically zoning said properties in accordance with law, fifty-nine Bryant Avenue, pin number zero-two dash two-seven dash two-zero-seven dash zero-one-five. And item J, uh, number twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve annexing certain properties to the city of Rowling Meadows and automatically zoning said properties in accordance with law, twenty-two zero-five and twenty-two oh-three Rowling Road, pin numbers zero-two dash twenty-six dash four-oh-six dash zero-zero-six and zero-two dash twenty-six dash four-oh-six dash zero-zero-seven, in for first reading. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes. With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. Which brings us back to ordinance D. Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve opting out of Cook County paid leave ordinance and rendering the county paid leave ordinance inapplicable to employers... Employers located within the city of Rowling Meadows, in for first reading. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Alderman McHale for the first.
Second.
And Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there discussion? Alderman Bud Matts, you pulled it.
So, I'm curious if we can get a legal opinion, if there's any liability on the city's part for the, um, the different governmental agencies, which would be camping on, um, the park districts and the school district, um, if in fact they were to, um, have legal action against them by one of their employees. Um, could we be named in that suit or have some culpable liability for their camping onto our passing of this ordinance?
So, with respect to the city's authority to pass this ordinance, we're utilizing our home rule powers to be able to do that. And it, so, i-in essence, what this does is basically dictate that the state law with respect to the Paid Leave for All Workers Act will apply, as opposed to the Cook County local law. Um, there's some question whether Cook County as a unit of local government has the authority to impose, um, provisions with respect to these matters as well. Um, with respect to whether the city can be named in a lawsuit from an employee seeking that kind of leave, um, I believe that the city has the authority to do this. I believe that the city has immunities with respect to the legislation that you pass here, specifically the city council as well. Um, so, I... Although I can't say that you're completely insulated from being sued, uh, the viability of that suit, I think, um, the city is in a good position here, being able to do this. Uh, the city has done this in the past, when Cook County, um, implemented the paid...
Authorize Quick Trip redevelopment in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Any discussion? Alderman Kohler.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting when we had the first reading, I voiced some concern over this plan, and I asked to meet with our city manager to review the plans. I just wanted to say that I did that. I reviewed the plans. Alderman O'Brien also reviewed the plans. After reviewing the plans, we found the plans to be in order. Actually, it's a very good plan, so I thought it was a good plan. And I think that Quick Trips and the development group there did a good job of putting the plan together. The only thing I asked our city manager is to review a couple things, which he knows about. One is traffic management has nothing to do with the plan, but it has to do with workman high dot on that intersection, as well as public safety for, again, Quick Trip's plan has everything for public safety purposes, but our access to that from the development behind could use some review for sidewalks and stuff like that. Other than that, because I did review it very carefully, it is part of Ward seven. I would recommend to my fellow council members to approve this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kohler. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, so the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the motion passed. Sorry, I just lost myself. The ordinance is adopted. That brings us to ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-two. Approve an amended special use permit for outdoor storage and variations for four thousand one Industrial Avenue, Richards Building Supplies, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Alderman Reyes for the first and Alderman Bud Matts for the second. Any discussion? Alderman Bud Matts.
So in reviewing this plan, I also went past the property, and I think that the changes that they've decided to make and are asking for the variations are reasonable and actually will improve the property and make it more in conformity with their neighboring property. So I think it's a great thing, and I'll be supporting it. I appreciate the efforts that they're making to, to make my ward more uniform and to fully utilize their property, which will allow them to stay here.
Thank you. Does there anybody else? The question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes. With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This brings us to our consent ordinances. The next items on the agenda are the consent ordinances in for first reading. It consists of eight items, items C through J. Does any alderman wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Alderman Bud Matts.
Item D.
Okay. Was there anybody else? Okay. Sorry, hold on. I'm not as fast as the mayor. Okay. So to, um, the chair declares that in order for one motion to consider the seven ordinances, A through C and E through J, um, there needs to be one motion with, one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Alderman O'Brien for the first.
Second.
Alderman McHale for the second. Okay, so I'm sorry, that was ordinances C.
C and then.
Yes, sorry.
E through J.
J. Do you want me to redo it?
No, I got it.
Okay. Sorry, guys. Okay, so ordinance C, number twenty-five dash zero-zero, amend the city code in order to reduce the number of video gaming cafes CG licenses issued in the city of Rolling Meadows, and reduce the number of Class II A liquor licenses issued in the city of Rolling Meadows. Isabella's Cafe, fifty-five forty North, New Wilkie Road, in for first reading. Ordinance E twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve a lease agreement with the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System, NIPIS, for the former fire station located at twenty-four fifty-five Plum Grove Road, in for first reading. Ordinance F, uh, number F, item F. Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve annexing certain properties to the city of Rolling Meadows and automatically zoning said properties in accordance with law. Seventeen thirty-six South Meacham Road, pin number zero-two dash three-four dash two-zero-two dash zero-one-six, in for first reading. Item G, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve annexing certain properties to the city of Rolling Meadows and automatically zoning said property in accordance with law. Ten thirty-six and ten forty-eight Plum Grove Road, pin numbers zero-two dash two-seven dash two-oh-three dash zero-zero-nine and two, uh, zero-two dash two-seven dash two-zero-three dash zero-one-zero, in for first reading. Item H, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve annexing certain properties to the city of Rolling Meadows and automatically zoning said properties in accordance with law. Thirteen twenty and thirteen eighty-four Vermont slash three-eight-eight Emerson, pin numbers zero-two dash twenty-seven dash four-oh-four dash zero-zero-two and zero-two dash twenty-seven dash zero-four-four dash zero-zero-three and two-zero dash twenty-seven dash two-zero-two dash zero-zero-four, in for first reading. Item I, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve annexing certain properties to the city of Rolling Meadows and automatically zoning said properties in accordance with law. Fifty-nine Bryant Avenue, pin number zero-two dash two-seven dash two-zero-seven dash zero-one-five. And item J, uh, number twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve annexing certain properties to the city of Rolling Meadows and automatically zoning said properties in accordance with law. Um, twenty-two zero-five and twenty-two oh-three Rowling Road, pin numbers zero-two dash twenty-six dash four-oh-six dash zero-zero-six and zero-two dash twenty-six dash four-oh-six dash zero-zero-seven, in for first reading. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes. With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will be, will be moved forward for second reading, which brings us back to ordinance D. Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-zero, approve opting out of Cook County paid leave ordinance and rendering the county paid leave ordinance inapplicable to employers, employers located within the city of Rolling Meadows, in for first reading. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Alderman McHale for the first.
Second.
And Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there discussion? Alderman Bud Matts, you pulled it.
So I'm curious if we can get a legal opinion if there's any liability on the city's part for the, um, the different governmental agencies, which would be camping on, um, the park districts and the school district. Um, if in fact they were to, um, have legal action against them by one of their employees, um, could we be named in that suit or have some culpable liability for their camping onto our passing of this ordinance?
So with respect to the city's authority to pass this ordinance, we're utilizing our home rule powers to be able to do that. And it, so i- in essence, what this does is basically dictate that the state law with respect to the Paid Leave for All Workers Act will apply as opposed to the Cook County local law. Um, there's some question whether Cook County as a unit of local government has the authority to impose, um, provisions with respect to these matters as well, um, with respect to whether the city can be named in a lawsuit from an employee seeking that kind of leave. Um, I believe that the city has the authority to do this. I believe that the city has immunities with respect to the legislation that you pass here, specifically the city council as well. Um, so I, although I can't say that you're completely insulated from being sued, uh, the viability of that suit, I think, um, the city is in a good position here, being able to do this. Uh, the city has done this in the past when Cook County, um, implemented the paid sick leave ordinance back in twenty-seventeen. At that time, the county, or the city opted out of the county's paid sick leave and minimum wage ordinance, taking the same position that these are matters more for the state and the federal government to dictate. With respect to your specific question on the school districts and park districts, um, the state has specifically determined that those units of government, as well as other, um, employers that are named in the state law, should be excluded from the mandates of providing that paid leave. And so that dictate from the state, I think, is what is, our position is that's what's more applicable. The state has more of the authority to implement those provisions than the county would over, um, our employers in the city of Rolling Meadows.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment? The question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinance will move forward for second reading. Which brings us on to new business. Um, item K, motion to approve payment of bills on warrants for January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve this warrant?
So moved.
Alderman O'Brien for the first.
Second.
Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. We now move on to consent resolutions. The next items on the agenda are the consent resolutions. It consists of three items, items L through N. Does any alderman wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the chair declares that in order for one motion to consider the three resolutions, the mo, the one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Alderman McHale for the first.
Second.
Alderman O'Brien for the second. Um, item L, resolution number twenty-five R dash zero-one, authorize the purchase of water meters and water meter parts for replacements, repairs, and new construction for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five from Core in Maine in not to and exceed amount of sixty thousand dollars. Item M, resolution number twenty-five dash R dash zero-two, approve fiscal year twenty-twenty-five motor fuel tax appropriations for public works, street rehabilitation program under the Illinois Highway Code. And item N, resolution number twenty-five dash R dash zero-three, approve updates and amendments to the city of Rolling Meadows employee manual. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With six in favor and zero opposed, the resolutions are adopted. This brings us to, brings the council to other business and reports. There is one mayor's appointment, um, this evening for the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. The new appointment named is Laura Garcia. Is there a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and zero opposed, the appointment is approved. There is no mayor proclamations and no city clerk's report, which brings us to city staff reports. Um, just a reminder, there are no discussions on the city staff reports. Up first is community items and interests, and we defer to Rob Salbo.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. The city's annual holiday light recycling program is taking place until February seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Holiday lights, extension cords, and power strips can be dropped into collection boxes located outside of City Hall. For more details about this program, please visit Elgin Recycling. That's E-L-G-I-N recycling dot com. For your convenience, Rolling Meadows Public Works will provide Christmas tree, holiday tree pickup services to all refuse customers on their regular collection day. Simply place the tree at the curb with your other refuse items. Residents should remove lights, tinsel, and ornaments and place trees at the curb with the cut side facing the street. For any questions about tree removal, please call Rolling Meadows Public Works at eight-four-seven nine-six-three zero-five-zero-zero. The city's Human Services Department will be offering a free power of attorney clinic on Friday, January twenty-fourth, from one to four P.M. at City Hall here at thirty-six-hundred Kirchoff Road. This clinic will guide participants through completing documentation for medical and/or financial power of attorney and/or temporary legal guardianship. Participants will walk out with notarized and legally binding documentation. To register, please contact the Human Services Department at eight-four-seven eight-seven-zero-two-six-nine-five. Lastly, City Hall and Public Works administrative offices will be closed on Monday, January twentieth, in observance of the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. Refuge collection will occur on regularly scheduled pickup days throughout that week. There will be no delay in refuge services as a result of the holiday. That is all for the season. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the December twenty-twenty-four new business report, and I defer to Martha Corner.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Um, during the month of December, we had eight businesses open in Rolling Meadows across all industry types, including, uh, Cardboard Cat Games at twenty-one seventy Plum Grove Road. All in, at the end of twenty-twenty-four, we had sixty-seven businesses open in Rolling Meadows.
Thank you very much. Next is our January twenty-twenty-one, or, sorry, January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five Committee of the Whole, which has been canceled due to lack of agenda items. So we'll move on to our January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five City Council draft agenda. The draft agenda is in the packet, and if the council has any questions regarding the agenda, they can please contact city manager Rob Salbo. Do you have anything for that?
Uh, no, nothing further to add. Thank you.
Um, are there any matters that are not on the agenda? So, cause you guys haven't heard enough of me talking. The library did just finish their strategic plan, so they are moving on to their next level of that. It was very, um, great to see at the last meeting that they had completed that, and they're very happy. The city did get called out twice in their strategic plan for working with the city as a whole and working with the Human Services Department. So we look forward to see what their next steps are in adopting their new strategic plan. We are now going to go into closed session for personnel for five ILCS one-twenty dash two for, of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, can, to consider.
C dash one.
Oh, sorry. C dash one of the Illinois Open Meetings Act to consider the appointment employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public, public body. I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session under section two C one of the Open Meetings Act requiring, or regarding personnel. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman O'Brien for the first.
Second.
Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session.